Good evening, everyone. I call to order the April 10th Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence your cell phones and electronic devices. We'll have in just a second Ms. Wagner call the roll, but I wanted to wish everyone a happy holiday, spring holiday season, and a Chag Pesach Semeach to our Jewish community, Ramadan Mubarak to our Muslim community, and Happy Easter to our Christian community. I'm sure I missed some folks, but happy spring holiday season. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
President?
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
President Lindy?
Here. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your requests for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any questions you might have. As we move to the second item on our agenda, you should see our board priorities. You'll see listed here the five areas that we as a board determined were most important between the end of January and the beginning of May. One of my goals is to help us make strategic use of our time, make sure that we're always clear on what the board feels is most important, and that we're spending the majority of our time together on those most important things. Last time, we had a robust and important discussion about number four, transportation. Tonight, we will touch on strategic planning as well as updating our bylaws. And I want to continue to challenge us as a group as we go through this evening and future meetings to ensure that we're spending most of our time on the things we decided were most important. When I saw updating the bylaws on here, as well as board superintendent relations, it made me remember that Vice President Craig has an update for everyone or a reminder for everyone about our self-evaluation.
Yes, so it is that time again for board members for us to do our own evaluation of ourselves as well. So what you should be receiving in the next couple of days, not tonight, is information from our folks with the Council of Great City Schools and just things for us that we committed to doing as far as evaluating ourselves and our performance and making sure that we're looking at ourselves kind of quarterly to so to see where we are headed towards and what we are doing as a board, ensure that we are motivated to get the best outcomes for our students as possible. So are we evaluating others within our governance responsibilities? We also must look at ourselves to see whether or not we are achieving success in that realm as well. So if you, if it hasn't already been sent out, it should be sent out either sometimes tomorrow or the next day. Just again with information about us evaluating ourselves and what to look for as we've kind of done in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. So we'll keep moving to item C, which is a resolution honoring Dr. Odell Owens. Tonight, we have the challenging task of recognizing someone whose impact on children in Cincinnati was enormous and who left us too soon. We're going to introduce here a resolution honoring Dr. Owens. And then we'd like to invite anyone from his family to the microphone if they'd like to share anything. They don't need to, where we have a beautiful plaque we'd like to share. But if anybody would like to share a few words, we really want to create a few minutes for them to do so. So the way we're going to introduce this resolution tonight is to have each board member read part of it. So can we start with Mrs. Weinberg? And then board members should have in front of them a copy of which section they are reading.
Cincinnati Public Schools, a resolution honoring Dr. Odell M. Owens. Whereas the Cincinnati Public Schools and the Cincinnati community lost a valued leader, innovative medical practitioner, community servant, devoted husband and parent, and strong voice for social change through health and education with the passing of Odell Marino Owens, M.D., M.P.H. on November the 23rd, 2022, and?
Whereas Dr. Owens was a Cincinnati Public School alum, graduating from Woodward High School and later attending Yale University School of Medicine, graduating with an M.D. and a master's degree in public health, and?
Whereas Dr. Owens was a strong advocate for children and an esteemed partner of Cincinnati Public Schools as one of the Board of Education's appointed members of the Preschool Promise Board of Managers, where he was serving as board chair, and?
Whereas Dr. Owens was a groundbreaker and impacted the community in various roles that includes Cincinnati's first reproductive endocrinologist and Hamilton County's first African-American coroner, and?
Whereas Dr. Owens, a former president of Cincinnati State Technical and Community College, believed in higher education as a means for youth to improve their lives and circumstances positively, and?
Whereas Dr. Owens, never failing to use his medical expertise as a means for community impact, recently served as medical director and interim health commissioner of the Cincinnati Health Department, and later as president and CEO of Interact for Health, where he was committed to improving the health of Cincinnati by championing important public health initiatives, and?
Whereas Dr. Owens touched the lives of everyone fortunate to know him because of his leadership, innovation, and compassion. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education honors Dr. Owens and his contributions to the community and to Cincinnati Public Schools, and the Board extends its sincerest condolences to his wife and CPS teacher, Michelle, his children, family, friends, and the innumerable people he impacted through his life and work. I submit this resolution as written.
Thank you, Board Member Jones. I'm going to take that as our motion from Board Member Jones. Is there a second to adopt this resolution? Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Any discussion on the resolution? Ms. Wagner, would you call the vote, please?
Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr.? Ms. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So the resolution carries. Can I invite everyone to join us in a round of applause for Dr. Owens and his family?
There we go. I wasn't planning on saying anything, but knowing my father, if I left silent, he would be mad. So, members of the board, on behalf of the Owens family, we thank you very much for this resolution. I know he's looking down on us, and yes, he was taken away from us too soon. But all I ask is for the board, as well as CPS, to keep his legacy going. You know, he was very passionate about children here in Cincinnati, to get an education. Even as kids, he taught us some valuable lessons. So that's all we, as the Owens family employer, is to please continue the work that he started and make sure that we can finish it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we're going to turn to the next item on our agenda this evening, which is the superintendent's update.
Thank you, President Lindy. So just a couple of updates from our last time together. And this will cover specifically review of magnet changes as well as just some updates for the concerns that were addressed or raised at the last meeting that we had specifically concerning Walnut Hills. So starting with the magnet changes, if you recall, from our presentation on January 23rd, we reviewed several of our schools that the magnet programs for those schools had been dropped several years ago, but there was still transportation that was occurring for those schools. So one of the charges that was provided to me and the team upon coming into the district was to make sure that we addressed the fact that the schools no longer had those magnet programs, and we did whatever addressing was necessary around transportation. And so that's what we're looking at today. So I will share that this is not new information for us. This was shared on the 23rd, but just recently, there has been some concern, especially from the Silverton community, about the changes in magnet transportation that has been addressed with several of the board members. We wanted to just remind all of us where kind of how we got here to this space. And then if there are any recommendations that we have moving forward, we want to be able to address those as well. So more than three years ago, based on what was shared with me, CPS ended the use of PIDEA and college prep names, but the associated transportation and magnet lottery changes were not put into effect. Schools continue to accept enrollment through the magnet lottery. So essentially what that means is for our schools, our neighborhood schools have a neighborhood boundary. That neighborhood boundary essentially says that students live within a certain area, and therefore they're assigned to that school based on the area where they reside. For the schools that were listed, for our magnet programs, the two schools listed, Silverton and Silverton was PIDEA, which was school-wide. Covedale and Mount Washington were magnets for fourth through sixth grade. So looking at the inconsistencies in terms of the number of impact on the students, the number of students accepted and enrolled through the magnet lottery at that time, and this is coming from January, was very limited. So that would be for this school year. For Covedale, there was one student that had been accepted through magnet lottery, and no students from Mount Washington. And from Silverton, for this school year, there had been 10 students accepted through magnet lottery, and eight students for last year. So all of the current students, so if we'll go back one more slide, please. So this is relevant because as we think about the magnet in terms of the magnet program, the magnet program no longer exists at the school. However, transportation was still being provided for students to be transported outside of the areas where they live into Silverton specifically as a part of overall district-wide transportation. So the recommendation and proposal moving forward was to first look at all current students can continue to remain enrolled until they exit the school. So thinking about the students that are currently enrolled in the school, that they, if they're already students there, then they would not need to leave the school until it's time for them to go to their next grade level. While the magnet lottery no longer applies for new students enrolling, all other students would remain in the school for enrollment based on space availability. So we broke that down into three different areas. The first was neighborhood enrollment, so students who live in the district and in the neighborhood attendance area. The second was out of neighborhood attendance area, so students who live in the district but are out of the neighborhood. That simply means that they are in our school district, but they don't live in the neighborhood that is an attendance area for the school. And then the third is students who live out of the district or out-of-district enrollment students. So impacts of transportation. Over the next two years, transportation will be brought into alignment with the current eligibility rules. This information is eligibility rules for transportation for magnet school students, the way that we do this in the district. So this has already been the case. This came directly off of our district website for our protocol, for what our protocol had been for transportation. So students currently receiving out-of-boundary transportation due to magnet status can continue for the next two years. So that's actually 2023 and 2024, and 2024 and 2025. So that actually covers a two-year window for when the students would then begin to transition. So there were no recommendations for changes for the upcoming school year or the school year thereafter. For Covedale, there were nine students that were grandfathered in, three were third grade and below. For Mount Washington, there were no students because, if you recall, there were no students that were enrolled under the magnet status for the last two years. And for Silverton, there were 106 students, 62 were third-grade students or below. Students receiving out-of-boundary transportation through eligibility factors other than magnet status were not impacted. So that means if there is special needs, if there is housing insecurity, then there is not a change for that population of students because it is expected that we maintain the students as well as we possibly can. Students will not be able to add out-of-boundary transportation if they're not already receiving it this school year. So this starts this school year, and if students were not already set up to receive out-of-boundary transportation, then they would not be able to request or get assigned or begin receiving out-of-boundary transportation this year. And then the next, students not currently receiving transportation remain subject to CPS transportation eligibility requirements, and the link is also there for the eligibility requirements. So at this time, this is the communication that had occurred, and this is again going back to the 23rd, but just to share, communication materials and FAQs were shared with principals Thursday, January the 19th. Principals reviewed this information with their I L T and L S DMCs the week of the 23rd, and principals communicated with families the week of the 23rd as well. And that was coming up at the time for Silverton, L S DMC, and PTA representative to discuss any additional issues for Silverton, which did occur. So I think some of the feedback that we have been provided specifically from the Silverton community is that there is a concern that with the number of students that are, that live in the Silverton neighborhood, that if we don't have continued transportation outside of the Silverton neighborhood, then there is the expectation that Silverton as a school would no longer exist. And I believe that that is the primary concern around not having transportation and not having transportation set up. We did review the information that was provided to us. It was provided to several of the board members and provided to me as well. We looked at that earlier. That information was pulled from a group that supports Silverton, and it was specific to neighborhoods that, based on the information that was provided, neighborhoods where students, where they, where students lived. What we, once we received that information, we did do a cross-reference of that. That would have been, I want to say, back in February or early March. So we did a review of that then. We also did another review of that last week just to see if there were any differences based on what was provided. So our information comes specifically from students assigned to the school that receive transportation. That's where the information comes from, and that's how we did the responses for that. So at this point, what we have offered, what we will continue to offer, especially because there aren't changes for this year and next school year, we will offer an opportunity for our team to meet with the Silverton community and have conversation with them or answer some of the questions that may be misconceptions at this time. I know that I also was able to share, because it has been shared, there have not been recommendations through ad hoc or any other place at this point that we would be looking to do anything in terms of not having Silverton as a school. And there are opportunities as we're looking at any of our program augmentations, how we look at boundaries for schools and how we look at additional programming should that become the need or the desire in the area. So I did want to stop there and see if there were additional questions for me before beginning to address the Walnut Hills concerns.
Do board members have any questions on the Silverton part of the superintendent's updates? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, just a comment and a question. I think a letter has gone out to some community members where there's an alignment, if you will, between the village council and the L S DMC and the PTA. The fear seems to be that somehow this district is going to be eliminating Silverton, and nothing could be further from the truth. If anything, it is an attempt to even strengthen and widen and expand the enrollment base and following along the lines of other schools that have been created as neighborhood schools in the last decade or so, whether it's Cairns in Clifton or whether it was Hyde Park, using this method and these models where you're combining neighborhoods, it begins to address not only our transportation issues and financial sustainability, but also moving more from, away from the magnet approach to actually enlarging the neighborhood draw. So I know we're all deeply committed to keeping the, frankly, the Silverton's at the best of both worlds. They're at the benefit of a large district and the benefit of a very vibrant community as well. So I want to reassure people, and I appreciate the superintendent clarifying some of those other issues. The issue is it loses, changes its status from magnet to neighborhood, but we love Silverton. It's a legacy school.
Thank you for sharing that.
Please.
Okay, thank you for sharing that, Board Member Bolton. That is one of the things that we have shared collectively. I do believe that there is, there is concern in that space. And I think that there is also some misunderstanding about boundaries in terms of schools, that how boundaries are drawn. And so I think it's important for us to also address that, you know, we are the organization that determines the boundaries, right? And so as we look at boundaries, the boundaries may not just specifically be in that particular neighborhood or in this case, in that particular city. But as we begin to look at how we're rightsizing the work that we're doing, how we're looking at program and program offerings, how we are looking at, again, augmenting the services that we're providing, it does give an opportunity to begin to look at additional boundaries if that becomes necessary from the work that we're doing. So thank you for just reaffirming, and hopefully, we are, our Silverton community is watching this as well or will have the opportunity to do that because I do think that we're all aligned in terms of that.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Wright. Just one quick question. You know, I'm always about transparency and communication. So I know with all that is occurring and the discussion that's still kind of going on in the community, will you be providing any additional communication out to parents? Even though I know you did do something, or the principals, I think, did something back in January. Moving forward to kind of close those concerns, will you be providing or suggesting for them to send anything else out?
So we actually had, we did that information then, and then we had a follow-up conversation with those that were representing the school and L S DMC. I don't remember if it was the chair or not, or a participant on the L S DMC. And most recently, we've offered the opportunity to do that again. And so I think after we do that, it, we will, it has seemed to work really well for us to send out clarifying information because it helps families across the board. At this point, we've only heard, we've only heard from a representative from the L S DMC, and we've not necessarily heard from families yet. But I think the families are having conversation possibly with the L S DMC or with their parent association. And so that just, that last request or our follow-up with that last request, after having some conversation, just looking at some of the feedback that was coming to us, it was really important that we did that reach out. So we did that, and then we'll meet with the team, and we'll gladly send out clarification as well.
Thank you so much. I think that's very important.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Anything else before we move to the Walnut Hills section? Superintendent?
Okay, so this just gives an opportunity to respond to the concerns that were raised during the last meeting specific to Walnut Hills. I will share that this information has been provided to each person that reached out to me from the Walnut Hills community. So, and it's also been provided to the board members as well. There was one letter that went out to everyone to address each of those concerns. And we've actually gotten some really positive feedback just from the fact that we sent something out to them to help with the clarification. So just want an opportunity to go through this information as well and clear up some misconceptions or some misinformation that has been provided. So we'll make sure that we're able to move forward. So I think the first is the admission cut scores. So the first thing to share is that cut scores for admission for Walnut Hills have not been changed, nor has it been stated that they would change this year. So if we recall, at a February meeting, the board requested a presentation around data in terms of admissions and what was happening in terms of the data for admissions. More specifically, there has been a change in the test that was required for Walnut Hills over the last several years or so. And the board did have interest around whether or not we were seeing something different in one set of assessments versus what we were seeing in the second set of assessments. So that's really where that conversation started, and we shared that information and shared the data. At that time, instead of making a decision, the board did not make a decision at that time about changing cut scores, nor has there been a conversation about changing cut scores for this year at all. So we do want to make sure that we clarify that. I think that has been clarified at the school level, but we did want to make sure that we clarify that openly. The next, summer scholars and programming. Walnut Hills will host summer programming for Walnut Hills and Withrow students as a summer scholar site. So for, just very transparently, one of the ways that we determined the schools that were schools for summer sites, we started by looking at schools that were having some kind of major maintenance at their schools. So for example, one of our schools is being fully painted, so that can't be a site for summer. We have another school that's having some HVAC work done, so that can't be a site for summer. In this instance, it was shared that because we're starting on the construction work for the cafeteria at Walnut Hills, that it was recommended that we did not use that site as a summer site as well. And so that's kind of where we started. However, at this point, we did, after getting the feedback, we did, and we did have a need to make a change in the summer site or for the setup of the site at one of the schools where Walnut was being assigned. It did give us an opportunity to go back to the contractors. They will actually start work the end of May. I'm looking at my team to make sure, I think it's the end of May. They'll actually break ground the end of May on the cafeteria, at the cafeteria. But it will last right now, based on what we have, until February. So there will be time. They did ask, you know, because they're breaking ground, and it will be very limited. The noise will be a problem, but it will be limited. They won't be able to use the cafeteria. They wanted to get as much done before we were able to use that as a location. But we did go back. They are supportive. They recognize that it does cause a challenge because there are so many other activities that happen at the school during the year as well. So we were able to begin to use, we are able to use Walnut as a summer site this year as well, and they will host Walnut and Withrow. Schedule E funding is one that has come up probably since my transition in May. We are evaluating Schedule E budgets for this coming year. There has not, there have not been recommendations or proposals that have gone to the board for this coming year. Schedule E is done as a part of our central office budgets. So as we know, we are just starting with those budgets for this year. Last year, there was a team after May that began to work on an overall process. There was a protocol that was provided, and there were opportunities to look at where we were this year for Schedule E. So we will continue to work through that. That will come to the board as a part of the proposal. And that there's been a lot of feedback around Schedule E specifically for, specifically for Walnut, to be honest, because Walnut does offer, of course, they have a lot of students, and they offer programming that is not offered in all of the schools that we have. And so therefore, they're looking for more Schedule E funds. The Schedule E funds go to support the coaches or the teachers that are offering support to those organizations, to those, to those athletic teams or arts teams. So that's what Schedule E is for. It's actually for the stipend that goes to the individual that oversees that area. Or individuals. For example, the case at Walnut, if we think about theater, they have theater. I think they have four different theater teachers. I'm looking at lead, tell me if I'm right or wrong. I think they have four different theater teachers. And so each of them do two performances, two or three performances each year, and they are paid a stipend for Schedule E. So the Schedule E is specific to the stipend for the staff. Construction projects. Two projects were completed during the school year, and two projects will begin at the end of the school year. The projects are scheduled to minimize disruption to learning to support summer programming. Facilities did adjust the plan as I just shared. However, some areas will not be available to students and staff during the summer. This has been shared as we talked and did conversation with the principal around what the recommendations were as we were transitioning to Walnut as a site. So for example, one of them is the cafeteria and any of the areas that's adjoining to the cafeteria. Elimination of positions is next. As we know, we've talked a lot about the positions, specifically the school community coordinator positions. Walnut Hills had about four of those positions. And as we've discussed, Walnut Hills has four of the positions between administration and the principal. We're evaluating the positions to determine the alignment to allow school leadership to make recommendations to the L S DMC. So there were four. So there were four positions that were assigned to Walnut. As we know, the positions are school community coordinators by the title of the position for the district, but the jobs that they did in the building were different jobs. And what we know in terms of those jobs is some of them are historical positions that have been at Walnut for a period of time. So what we discussed with the principal, we have been provided job descriptions for what the roles actually do, so that we can look at what we have available already in the district, and then to bring those back as a part of a part of the programmatic budget for central office versus those positions possibly being allocated at the school level because of the diversity in the program. Athletic event transportation, and we do know that throughout the year, we've had challenges with transportation from the very beginning. When we started having the inconsistencies with transportation, Walnut Hills leadership and family voiced early on in the school year that they were willing to do transportation for the students to keep the students from missing games or having cancellations, so forth and so on. Unfortunately, while many of the transportation, transportation issues have improved, I didn't say they were great or they were perfect, many have improved. They have not improved to the level that we have been able to bring support back for those athletic activities. And so that has continued, but that really started with the the team at the school saying, this is transportation that we will provide. There are many of our programs that are at Walnut, the the districts that they are in and the other programs that they work with are not a part of CPS. And so when those events are canceled, when there are cancellations, when there are concerns, when they show up late, they have challenges outside of just working with our athletic association. So that's one of the reasons that's happening. We did do a, we did a presentation at our last board meeting around transportation, and we are hopeful that as we move into next year, not only are we addressing the fact of daily transportation and getting students to school on time, but also we're able to go back and address where we are with transportation for our athletic activities. And the funding model, the proposed budget reflects reflects Ohio's new fair funding formula and future elimination of SRS. So one of the concerns was how the funding model came about, what funding model we were using. So this is just an opportunity to clarify that. We're working through the budget process with the board, and changes may occur. Both school and central office budgets must balance to the actual revenue per the board directive. That is conversation that we are continuing to have, but the number that was listed in terms of the percentage that the number that we're looking to cut in terms of what we may have to have reductions in, in terms of general, our general revenue is about seven and a half percent, almost eight percent from where we were last year. So while the number looks really large, overall, the percentage is less than eight percent. And I think that's it. Questions for me?
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions from the board about the Walnut Hills portion of the superintendent's updates? Ms. Bolton?
Just one. I appreciated the summary tonight and also the previous written summary regarding the Walnut Hills tests and the cut scores and whatever. I just wanted to make sure we add too that one of the issues was the fact that when we, as you mentioned, changed tests to Iowa, the the board, previous boards, when that occurred, the concern was that about the same sort of percentage of students that had been qualifying under the previous test, that's about that same percentage would also occur during the Iowa test. So I think that was one of the concerns when the previous administration wanted us to contemplate and agree to the changing of the tests for very good educational reasons. So I think I still am interested, not tonight, but still interested in seeing that percentage because I don't believe that the the quality and the talent necessarily changed, but indeed, I think it'd be great to just look at that rather than thinking in terms of cut scores. It was really to see if the same sort of diversity and same sort of availability of the of Walnut itself would prevail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Other comments or questions before we keep going? Dr. Moffitt?
I'll be brief. I do appreciate this information. I think it has helped to dispel many myths that have been circulating around about lowering the standards is what I've heard people say in the community, and that was just the furthest from the case. I do want to point out two things. One is that around that conversation that we had at the Cal, we were talking about analyzing the data from the cut scores that we did do for those students that came in. I believe it's their current eighth graders now. So I almost hate to say it because that's what sparked this conversation about the cut scores and lowered standards, but it wasn't generated for that reason. It was generated to analyze the data, get some information, and I think that was the request. So I think we still, we got a little distracted, but I think that we still wanted to have some data around the students that came in from COVID with lowered scores, cuts entrance, cut scores. What, how are they faring? What are they, what are their challenges so that we could potentially look at that and improve moving forward? That was, I think, I know that was my request, so I still want to make sure that that's the case. And then on slide number nine, if you could just go back for me, Rob, to slide number nine, we are talking about Walnut Hills, but I also want to point out that the, maybe it's not slide number nine, I'm sorry, it's about the budget, but you, oh no, it is slide number nine, the elimination of positions. I just want to point out, the process is the same. It's not different for Walnut Hills. It's the pro, the process is that the school leadership makes recommendations for their LSDMC and IOT to review their budget. I just want people to understand that that's not simply a Walnut Hills only issue. That is the process per policy that is for all of our schools, and that is being followed by all of our schools. I just think that's very poignant to point out that this presentation is needed, it's about Walnut Hills, and we're speaking about them, but that particular process is for every single school. So I just wanted to make sure I point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Moffitt. So in terms of the data for the eighth grade students, what we we want to discuss, where we would like to present that, we did share, I did share it with the board, but we've had a lot happen, and we've been involved in a lot of different things. So I shared the data with the board, but we've not talked about it in one of our meetings. So if that's something that we would like to address in one of our upcoming meetings, by all means, we can add that. We may want to maybe even look at it in May, so it gives the school year time to get over before someone comes in and says, we're trying to do something different. So if that's, if that's, if the board supports that, I think that we could actually spend some time doing the analysis because I think the information is very telling.
Thank you, Dr. Moffitt. Thank you, Superintendent. Any other questions or comments on the superintendent's update before we keep moving? Okay. Hearing none. I think, Dr. Moffitt, did you have a motion you wanted to make?
I do. I would like to make a motion. Just in in light of a potentially long meeting, can we move up our announcements and kudos to after hearing of the public so that in the event people are being recognized, they can hear it at a, at a normal hour rather than have to stay up till midnight?
So what we've been doing is keeping those at the end. There's a motion to move them up earlier in the meeting. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Is there any discussion?
Only one, one, one.
Mr. Morosky.
If I may counter motion that we don't have a long meeting.
I second that. You know what?
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Any other discussion on the motion? I'll just say, before, before we vote, I'm very happy to support whatever the majority of the board would like to do. I think that the challenge is always, can we focus our time on the issues that we decide in advance are going to matter most for children? And so as long as we're doing that, you know, you certainly have my support. So would you call that vote, please? Or any other discussion before we vote? James Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mr. Craig?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffitt?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Linding?
Yes. So we are now at the item on the meeting agenda for hearing of the public. Each speaker will have two minutes, and we will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Once a request to speak has been granted for folks online, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Please provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you have a direct response to any question you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol, and we appreciate your help. In the unusual event that someone is not willing to follow this protocol, we do reserve the right to end that person's time. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please do refrain from discussing any personnel items. If you're online after speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Finally, we ask that your public commentary be respectful of all listeners, and thank you. Rob or Dan, can you share with us how many speakers we have online this evening? Is it three?
We have three speakers online.
Three online. So I think, sorry, one last piece here. We typically don't respond in the meeting, sometimes because of time, sometimes because there's follow-up work that needs to happen prior to a response, but we do ask for people's contact information so that we can provide a response. If you haven't received a response and asked for one, please do contact me via the board office. So we have, I think, about 10 folks in person. I'm going to read the first three names, and I just ask that all, all three come down and be ready. And as we move through, I'll keep adding the next person who's up on deck. And so we will do our in-person folks first, then our online folks, and then we'll finish with CFT President Julie Zell. The first three tonight are Latasha Fields, Sylvia Nelson, excuse me, and Sally Grimes. If those three would like to come down, please.
President Lindy, can I just say that on your way down, you can pick up some candy because there's Easter candy over here? We don't want to take it back.
Thank you very much. Ms. Field?
Good evening. My name is Latasha Fields, and I am the aunt slash advocate for Demetrius Elliott, a fourth grader at New Path by way of Pleasant Hill Academy. And because of the two minutes, I would like to read my concerns so that I don't miss anything. We are literally going into the eighth month of school, and I bet Demetrius has missed five months of learning this school year alone. He started the school year off very rocky. There was a parent staff, parent slash staff meeting that took place on September 7th. We were supposed to be developing a plan for him for the school year based on his previous school behavior. By this time, he had already been suspended twice. Our next meeting was scheduled for October 6th, and it was at this meeting that we were finally able to get an IEP in place thanks to Mr. Gideon Smith, though the family had tried to do this many times this school year prior. On October 17th, we received a text message from the principal indicating that Demetrius is coming home with removal paperwork. No one can deal with Demetrius and his behavior. Prior to this notice, Demetrius had already encountered several other out-of-school suspensions. He would go back one day and get kicked out the next. On October 26th, we met again to discuss the IEP. It was at this time, it was determined that Demetrius would be expelled from Pleasant Hill Academy, and he would go to a more restrictive environment. While this, that was being put in place, we were told he was offered home instruction. Finally received a call on November 17th stating that they were looking for a home instructor. We're six months in, needless to say, Demetrius still has no home instruction. It what?
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Sylvia Nelson, followed by Sally Grimes, followed by Jilda Vargas-Adams.
Good evening, board. First, I'd like to take the time to thank you for the concerns that were expressed. I know that some might call it misinformation. I think that clear communication with the community is is helpful and will avoid situations like that in the future. So one of the things I'd like to address is that I started looking through the student achievement and proficiency levels at some of the high schools, and I think there's a big concern that families have, if their kids don't get into Walnut, where do they go in the district? The proficiency levels at the high schools was so disappointing, I mean, below 25% proficiency at the seventh and eighth grade level for almost every other school except Walnut, and that's unacceptable. That should not, there should be a, there should be a choice for people. Everybody may not get into college prep, but they should have a choice in their neighborhoods to go to school where they're not disturbed by just things that are going on in the neighborhood. The other issues I feel have been addressed in the superintendent's report, and I can talk about them separately. But I think the the thing is that what I heard in the meeting last time is that there were several schools that felt like they weren't listened to, and I just say, listen to the schools. People on the ground know what they need. I understand, you know, come, someone comes in, they want to change things, they want to improve things, and just listen to the people on the ground because people know what they need at the schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Sally Grimes, followed by Jilda Vargas-Adams, followed by Laura Moore.
Hello, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Sally Grimes. I am the Executive Director of Activities Beyond the Classroom, or ABC. I'm here tonight to highlight successes of the 20-year partnership between ABC and CPS, and to ask that as you work on budgets and plans for the future, you remember that we are all stronger when we work together. ABC and CPS are deeply linked partners. ABC was built around the needs of CPS students, evolving into an organization that walks with and works with CPS to solve challenges and improve student outcomes. Whether it's athletics, resource coordination, the Jazz Festival, arts clubs, or something else, we know that neither ABC nor CPS could do this on our own. We are stronger together. Let's talk about money. Thanks to the donor relationships ABC has cultivated over the years, ABC raised nearly $2 million in this past year alone. That's $2 million in free extracurricular programs throughout the district annually. $2 million that CPS did not need to spend on extracurriculars, and $2 million that CPS can put towards academics. How else are we stronger together? Let's go all the way back to 2004. CPS athletic budgets were slim and programs were struggling. Former CPS Athletics Director Dave Jerker knew that to give our kids at CPS the same athletic opportunities their suburban counterparts have, an outside partner was needed. Dave called a community member for help, and thanks to an anonymous donation, ABC was born. Since then, we've seen many successes. I had written out quite a few examples to share with you when I had three minutes, I thought, but I only have two, so I won't go through them, but each of you have in front of you a massive document that outlines all of the programs we currently have in CPS schools, which include over 15,000 students this year alone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Next, we have Jilda Vargas-Adams, followed by Laura Moore, followed by Sharon McCafferty.
I'm too short for this. Hi, I'm Jilda Vargas-Adams. I am a parent, a pediatrician, and an advocate for CPS students. I want to remind you about an issue that hasn't been front of mind for CPS for about four years, which is healthy school start times. As the district strives to reinvent transportation and ensure student well-being and achievement, please remember that one of the greatest drivers of these outcomes is sleep and school start times for high schoolers. A few of you remember on April 15th, 2019, when this Board of Education passed a resolution calling for all high school students to start school at 8:30 or later, with the caveat that some students could start school at 8 o'clock if logistics prevented a full transition. The resolution was the result of years of advocacy from the community and was broadly celebrated. Now CPS has the opportunity to utilize the proposed two-tiered busing system to further ensure that healthy start times are guaranteed for all CPS high school students. At present, most CPS high school students start school at 8. With the new system with elementary schools going early, all high schools could start at 8:30 or later. Science has demonstrated that this change should improve attendance, achievement, health, mental health, and other outcomes as well. Moreover, healthy start times have enhanced benefits for students who are experiencing other challenges, making this a key initiative for districts addressing equity issues. I urge you to ensure that any forthcoming changes align with your prior resolution and give our high schoolers every opportunity for better outcomes and experiences. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have Laura Moore, followed by Sharon McCafferty, followed by Beth Wilson. Uh, we have Laura Moore, followed by Sharon McCafferty, followed by Beth Wilson.
Good evening. My name is Laura Moore. I'm an attendance support specialist at Roseland Elementary, Hartwell Elementary, and Woodward High School. And I would like to speak to you about that position again. Um, I have not received any formal communication saying that my job is being eliminated, but all year, all of us in this position have been told that we should be looking for new jobs because it will be, uh, eliminated at the end of the year. And I would just like to point out that in, in all the talks about attendance specialists and support specialists, uh, I have not heard any communication about if my job is eliminated, who will be doing that job in the future? Um, the work that I do is mandated by state law. Um, there, there are standards that we have to meet as far as reporting our attendance and how we respond to truancy. And our social workers will not be able to do the valuable work that they do in working with at-risk children and at-risk families if they are spending one to two days a week doing the paperwork that is done by people in my position right now. And as I said, I, we have never had any official confirmation that our position is being eliminated, but I would urge you, uh, to consider that this job does need to be done and to think about who is going to do it if we are eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sharon McCafferty, followed by Beth Wilson, followed by Tara Andrews.
Um, hi, everyone. I'm actually here because I've emailed you all and I think it's really easy to hide behind a screen. So I just want to show up in person and let my Midwest niceness shine through. Um, but I do have two pieces of feedback that I will then email to you because they're so detailed. I do come from a strategy background, so I'm quite critical in this area. As I look at the strategic plan that's in place that we were exposed to earlier this afternoon by Derek, I, it is unfortunate the lack of strategy. Strategy can explain the why behind the what. I see a lot of ideas and a lot of tactics, but we're not really seeing the reasoning come through. So I will talk more to that in my email, but just want to put that out there. Second, and this one is hard to hear and I talked to Derek earlier to sort of apologize. It's not personal, but the use of data is something I feel really strongly about and I'm so heartened that we're using it so heavily. However, the way we're approaching it from even soliciting feedback to the questionnaires that are run and even just the, the responses that are offered, in my opinion, and it is just egregiously, um, no, at best, it's uninformed. At worst, it could be used to make really bad, uninformed, poor decisions for our district. There are too many important decisions to be made and it's just, it breaks my heart to see that not working to its best. I do appreciate it, um, but it, it won't support anything. In fact, that current transportation survey is just sort of a mess. And anything that comes out of that really needs to be looked at carefully and I would offer that I really will be looking at it carefully to hold that to account. And I'm happy to support Derek in any way. Um, finally, I just want to say thank you all for responding. Um, Superintendent Wright, I appreciate your responding at 1:00 in the morning and I'm sure your reply wasn't intended to be terse. It was just like, oh my gosh, another parent. Dr. Moffett and for forwarding my emails, Mr. Lindy for always responding and even giving me quick hellos and, you know, quick check-ins. Um, so I thank you all, so.
Thank you very much. Uh, next we have Beth Wilson, followed by Tara Andrews, and then we'll go to our first online speaker.
Good evening. Um, my name is Beth Wilson. I am a parent of a Kilgore, um, sixth grader and Walnut Hills 10th grader. I am, um, here tonight to talk about the Iowa's test scores for Walnut Hills acceptance. And I am very happy that a lot of the things have already been brought up this evening and I really appreciate, uh, Dr. Moffett, when you were talking about really reviewing the, um, information of the eighth graders that had the lower test scores because from speaking to other parents that were in that group of children, they are A students that are now in honors program at Walnut and doing very, very well. And I just ask you to really consider the kids that were at home, not present. I keep on looking at these banners behind you of be present that for two and a half years, these students were not able to be present in a school environment from ages, or grades three through sixth grade. And now we're looking to them, not only do they have a different test from the Terranova that we were talking about from 2018, where over 500, um, kids were eligible in, in district. I know there were different numbers for out-of-district, but in-district kids, over 500 at that time. In 2020, when we did lower the scores for that group of students, um, we still weren't up to the 500 and they were still having to take a test and they are still striving to be excellence and showing that through their grades and their participation at school. And so I come tonight just to ask you to really consider this. Um, we're looking at kids that are still 50% above, um, the national percentage. These are kids that have As in class right now. They study hard, they come to school, they want to participate in the public education. My, my family, we are very much not wanting to have to look at alternatives. And unfortunately, if we, um, I hate to say it, but if we can't come up with some kind of talent and audition for a school and be accepted from a performing arts background, our alternatives are quite frankly, um, some schools that are not performing at the level. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Tara Andrews, followed by our first online speaker.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tara Andrews and I currently have three students who are my grandsons enrolled in Woodward High School and I am terrified for their safety. Not going to go into all the details, but, um, the shooting that happened at the bus stop, my grandson was one of the ones that took his hoodie and wrapped it around the boy's leg so he wouldn't lose a lot of blood. Now I've emailed the principal, uh, starting in January about one of my students who's constantly skipping school, nothing done. Um, um, today it was an email that there was a threat sent out for Woodward High School. It's been a lot of incidents, which I don't want to get into. Uh, parents and, and kids know about everything and it seems as if the administration knows, knows nothing. I got the one child that's skipping school, has problems and because they would not document anything, they kept putting it in his brother's name, uh, I couldn't get a higher level of care for him. So now he's out of control. I think I've lost him. So I'm just asking you all, could you please help Woodward High School? Uh, the principal, it's, it's, it's not working. He doesn't respond and I'm not the only person that says this, even teachers. I wouldn't know anything unless teachers called me. Nobody called me and told me it was a shooting. It was, uh, the help, the therapist that they have based in school and called me and asked me, was my boys all right? There was a shooting. So all I'm asking you all, please, I need help. They haven't been back to school because he don't want to go back to school. They scared. There's, uh, two of them were standing there where the shooting would happen and one was skipping. So I'm asking you all, please. I bought, I even printed out the emails that I sent to Mr. Workman and brought them to the Board of Education and never heard anything back. So I appreciate you all listening to me. Woodward, it's, it's terrible. I don't see how kids are able to walk in and out. My grandson has missed over 30 days in first bell and seventh bell. I don't understand it. So if I could get some help, if we could get some help, and I don't know what to do. My grandsons don't want to go back to school. They haven't been back since that shooting. So, um, if somebody could get with me, it would be appreciated. But I just, y'all need to know this, this is terrible.
Thank you very much. And I will turn things over to our, uh, General Counsel Miss drawing.
Thank you. We have two online speakers now, Sarah Stewart, followed by Carrie Kinkle. Go ahead, Ms. Stewart.
Hello, um, good evening, President Lindy, members of the school board and Superintendent Wright. Um, as an individual who works in a public school district, I know district administrations and school boards are forced to make hard decisions in regards to staffing based on changing yearly budgets and student enrollment. Um, as a parent with three children attending the same public schools, two of them attending Fairview, I urge you to consider maintaining the reading specialist position at Fairview German Language School. Um, according to the 2021-2022 full report card data for CPS's 36, uh, Title I elementary schools, Fairview has more economically disadvantaged students in terms of enrollment numbers, not percentages, but in terms of enrollment numbers than 12 of the Cincinnati Public Title I elementary schools. Please consider this in making a decision in regards to Fairview's reading specialist position for next school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carrie Kinkle. Go ahead, Ms. Kinkle.
Um, the, the parent who just spoke recently about the Walnut thing, pretty much everything she was saying was something that I was, um, interested in, in bringing, um, to light. Um, and also, um, Ms. Bolton, I believe it was, who said that for this year, that is not going to be, um, a consideration. So does that mean that the board is planning on possibly making changes for the forthcoming year? Um, is that something that you have on a, like a long-term agenda? Um, you also spoke about, um, you know, this, um, data sets that needed to be reviewed or what have you, is that going to be something that's available to us, the public at large? Because obviously we don't make decisions based on our emotional responses, which can happen because like, I'm gonna, I, I went to Walnut, my kid is there. Um, you know, we have these connections, but obviously things, understandably so, should be based on data. So I wondered to know if those things would be available to us at large if, say, there is change, um, coming in the forthcoming year. And I wondered why, um, why would the Iowa test trump what is, um, work, or working right now or what has been working? Um, so those would be, um, questions that I had. Um, and also, which your board member already spoke to as well, but the whole notion of our kids being kind of lost for those two years of COVID. For example, my student who is now at Walnut failed three classes his eighth grade year because he's on a, he doesn't learn that way. He is, um, he's not neurotypical and now is a 10th grader, is an AV student. So our students can come back to stasis, um, and that might be something that, that, um, should be looked at. Um, so, um, I guess that's really it. And also, um, I'm really sorry for the woman who's dealing with the stuff at Woodward and just as a community member at large, I would really implore that you all do provide help and look into that because there is a gross disparity in our schools as we all know. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, I believe if there are no other online speakers, our last speaker tonight is CFT President Julie Sellers. Um, for people joining us this evening, just kidding, we do not have a last speaker. That was our last speaker. Um, so absent any objections, we'll keep moving to, uh, the approval of our minutes. Superintendent, yes, please.
I just, um, Board President, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I just want to, um, just respond to two things very quickly if I can. I know we don't generally respond, but I do think that it's relevant to make sure that we do that now. Um, so first, um, all of the, the comments, we do appreciate those. We'll make sure that we look into those as necessary. Uh, if we recall in our last board meeting, uh, where we talked about the budget and there may be some that did not get an opportunity to see that because that was our marathon board meeting that we had, but we did talk in that meeting about the attendance clerk positions, um, that are CFOP positions. Uh, the board did give us direction during that time, uh, to make certain that we are able to maintain those positions. And so there were 10 of them, there were 15 positions. There are 10 currently active. We have 10 active members in those positions. So we're doing the necessary follow-up with CFOP. Once we do that, we then will make sure that we do the follow-up with the staff members. Uh, but just to add the clarification that was decided and, and direction was given from the board in the last board meeting. I think the second is in terms of Woodward, I do think it's important that we share collectively and share to the parent, uh, to parents, to teachers, to all of our staff members, to our community members that are, that are, are listening right now. Um, I think all of us equally have concerns about what is happening in and around Woodward High School. Um, most recently today, I was at the school, meeting with the group of students. Um, the students, as many of us know, um, did a, a very organized, um, very peaceful and very appropriate, um, student protest last week where about 100 of them, uh, walked out, um, during the school day um, to really raise awareness to the concerns that they have for what's happening in their community and in their school building. There was follow-up, there's been follow-up with that. They had an opportunity to have dialogue with me today. And in terms of the information that is provided, it is really important that we do make sure that all of the information is updated at the school level. Anytime there is something that happens at a school, we do provide that information. We send the information to families because we don't want families to just hear about it from their students or from other students. We want you to know what's occurring. Uh, we, most recently, one of the recommendations that the students gave, and I do want to share this with the board and I'll be sending a bit more of a synopsis for what the young people shared with me today. But one of the recommendations that the students made, uh, was around the bus stop and the location of the bus stop. Um, so as soon as I left the school today, I was able to make contact with Metro as well as our city manager. Um, we are doing a follow-up on the 12th around the recommendation that came from the students. Uh, and then any recommendations that we have for the bus stop because that was the one thing that the students gave as they, that was one of the areas that they gave that they thought if there could be a movement in the bus stop locations, that would be something that would make them feel more secure. And the second thing that they requested, uh, that's not really, um, directly related to us, so we'd have to have that conversation with the city manager, is out on Reading, they requested an additional speed bump as well as a signage that shows that it is a school zone. And so this came directly from the students at the school today. So I did want to share that. We are, we are very aware, we've been working in partnership, uh, with CPD as well because it is going to take all of us to make certain that we engage around the concerns that we're having there. Thank you to the parent that shared the information with us.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. Uh, so we'll move now to the next item on our agenda this evening, which is the approval of our minutes.
Kudos.
Just kidding. We're going to move next to the new item on our agenda, which is kudos. Does anybody have any announcements or kudos this evening? Mrs. Weinberg.
I have a couple. Hopefully I will be very quick, very brief. We're getting it pulled up here shortly. So here on the first slide, I just wanted to kind of share some kudos, um, of some things that were going on in the district. And as Rob is pulling up the presentation, you will see on the first slide that I wanted to just give a huge kudos to Josh Harden, to all of our partners, to all of the staff, students, and of course, our superintendent as well for making the CPS All-Star, um, basketball game such a huge success. I got the opportunity to go with a couple of my colleagues and as you see up on the screen, it was a great time. Um, I think the community loved it and most of all, the students loved it as well. So huge kudos to them. Next slide. Um, we have a CPS graduate, means Cameron, who is the owner of Black Own. I just wanted to give a huge shout out to him for constantly giving back to the community. Um, a couple of weeks ago, he spoke to Gamble High School students on entrepreneurship and what it was like to, or what it is like to own a business. And I think that's very important for our youth to be able to see, so I would like to thank him for that. And then also just giving a big, huge shout out to WCPO, Tiana Henry, and to the Scripps, um, Spelling Bee that was held here, um, a couple of months ago. I was supposed to do some of these kudos at our last meeting, but we went really long, so I decided to save it for this time. Next slide. I got the opportunity to speak at Walnut Hills High School to a group of women for Girls to Women for their monthly speaker series. And I got the opportunity to kind of just talk with the girls and motivate them on what it is or what does it mean to be a woman and how to engage in your dreams and reach reality. I also, after speaking to those particular women, I heard that they had a pitch series in which they actually won. So they contacted me and emailed me and let me know that they were very proud to share that they were winners. And you can see in the picture of them holding the check that they were able to, some of the winners were able to receive a full, um, scholarship. If you look on the right, I got the opportunity to also attend Walnut Hills High School. They had a 2023 BCC Talent Showcase in which many of the students, um, they just showcased their talent and it was really nice to see. They had these three ladies, I didn't show this particular picture, but the young lady in this picture, she sang a Whitney Houston song and it was beautiful. But there were three girls who decided to do a Dreamgirls version and they were the Walnut Hills Dreamgirls. So it was an amazing opportunity to be able to be there and support them. So huge kudos to them. Next slide. I also got the opportunity to support the Fairview German School by attending their Fasching, which is an annual yearly event. They had over a thousand people come to support, maybe even more, and it was a huge fundraiser. And as you can see from the pictures, the kids are very excited to make their mask and to really hone in on the German heritage. And they had the event inside the gym and also outside of the school, the school as well. Next slide. It's not me. Someone else.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Does anybody? Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Does anybody else have any other kudos they'd like to share? Dr. Moffett.
I do have a kudos, and I'll be very brief. I was able to, for like the past month and a half, work with the superintendent and her team to bring Central State University to CPS. And they, our plans had to change a little bit because they were going to bring a big bus and do admissions on site and bring the band, et cetera. And they didn't bring the bus, but they did come to Woodward High School and brought the band, which was absolutely awesome. The president of Central State University was able to come and visit and welcome. They did accept admissions, I think of three students within the hour and a half that we were there. Three students received $50,000 in scholarship money, which is, which is just great and phenomenal. And the reason I really wanted this at a normal time is because they are having an open house on April the 15th where they will be doing admissions on site. They do want our CPS students to come. Since this event, Mount St. Joseph reached out and said, hey, can we have a day at CPS as well? And I was like, you know what? I know some folks that I can connect you with. So to the CPS staff, the superintendent, administration, all of her team, I will say thank you very, very much. Kudos to the recruitment staff, who I don't know everybody, but I know beyond the exact team, there were people that were there in, in support, at the door, security, Woodward, everybody was really, really on deck, and they absolutely loved it. So I do want to say kudos formally. And please, if you know of a student, they are given out free money, free money for a pilot program in June. And if you're interested in agriculture, there's a lot of funding there, too. So I won't be too long-winded, but the information is there, I think, on the CPS website. I'm not exactly certain where, but it is around. Make sure that you get an opportunity, if you know a student, to get that done. And then kudos to everyone that attended. And we're going to maybe look at Mount St. Joe Day. And this was kind of a thing. They kind of wanted that. They're, they're reaching out to us. So that's a good problem to have, good problem to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Any other announcements or kudos? Mr. Morosky.
Thank you, President Lindy. I have an announcement. It'll be quick. I just wanted to update the board and the administration. As you all may be aware, since the state of Ohio, leadership does not fancy voting, particularly for our students and our families. I've been in some preliminary talks with a national organization called Vote Riders. It's a nonprofit 501(c)(3) nonpartisan outfit that specializes in ensuring young people have the proper identification to vote in their specific state. And so I'm going to be talking with them. I don't have anything besides that update. I'll let you know what happens. But my intent would be that these people, or some version of these people, would be in all of our schools in the fall, so that everyone 16 and older can receive the proper identification they need to vote in the state of Ohio with no barrier.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Did you have two? Got it. Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Any other announcements or kudos before we keep going? Okay, hearing none, we will keep moving to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the special meeting minutes for March 6th, and then the business meeting minutes for March 6th?
Don't move.
Thank you, Board Member Jones. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Minutes are approved. We're going to go through our committee report section next. We have a large number of these tonight, in part because with the spring break, we just haven't had a board meeting in more weeks than normal. But there were some requests from at least some board members that we not stay here too late this evening. And I would just let folks know that some of that is within our control. And so I invite you to share the most important information from your committee report, and then allow us to have some discussion, and then move to the other items on the agenda. So we'll start with Ms. Bolton. Would you like to present the audit committee report, please?
Yes, very, very quickly. Make sure the board is aware that the appointments have taken place, and the Audit Committee also has established its officers. And so we're at a full complement on the Audit Committee. The other thing I might add is that we did in our district report to the Audit Committee, we did share with the Audit Committee that the district has been talking about Title I monies, has been talking about the budget process, and also kind of the ramifications of declaration and demarcation of free and reduced lunch. And finally, if you will read as submitted, there will be a number of items where you will see that the Audit Committee is very much involved with the return on investment. Also, internal auditor is also very involved with transportation expenditures and costs, and is investigating cash control methods. I submit in hope for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Any questions about the Audit Committee report, please? Hearing none. Ms. Jones, would you present the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee of the Whole report, please?
Yes, thank you. I would like to submit for board approval the minutes of the Student Instructional Performance Committee's meeting on March 15th. Basically, there were two major agenda items, and they were huge, in fact. The first one being the fiscal year 2023 budget, as we all know, was very intense and very thorough. And there were 13 major bullets that came out of there, in which we discussed. The superintendent did follow-up tonight with some very specific information about some of that conversation, but I would encourage our public to read a copy of a full presentation, which is on our Board Docs website. The second topic was around the presentation of the mid-year student data. As you all know, we, we have formulated goals and guardrails, and this is strictly focused on the achievement data for elementary and high schools in the areas of math and reading. So again, I encourage, encourage all of our public to read it on Board Docs, and I submit as written.
Thank you very much, Member Jones. Any questions or comments on the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee of the Whole?
That's a mouthful.
I gotta write twice. It's kind of impressive, right? Better not try it again. Okay, moving on to the next one. Mr. Morosky, would you present the Policy and Equity Committee meeting minutes, please?
I would love to. Thank you so much. Policy and Equity Committee met on Friday, March 17th, otherwise known as St. Patrick's Day at 9:00 a.m. here. We started off by having some outside counsel come with our General Counsel's office, led by Dan Hoing, to talk about updates and new versions of our Title IX sex discrimination and sexual harassment policy. We agreed to recommend the policy to y'all, and you've done that. This has already happened. The big thing in here that I'll draw your attention to, we'll talk about later, and then I'll be done, is the promotion and retention policy we've been working on for some time, in conjunction with our bargaining units, with General Counsel, with administration, with treasurer. We're pretty happy with it. We want to give the board an opportunity to weigh in on it tonight because it is so important. And then, quick update on the bylaws. It's moving along on our timeline. President Lindy, you will be happy to know that the green rating that you suggested for us was, was well worth it. We're doing a great job. I present the minutes as written.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. I never had any concerns. Are there any questions or comments for the Policy Committee on their report? Hearing none. Ms. Bolton, would you present the Budget, Finance, and Growth Committee, please?
Yes, thank you. Just again, to admit, as written, with, I guess, spotlighting particularly the fact that the committee is also very much involved with agreeing with the administration regarding contract reviews, as well as wanting to emphasize the importance of the agreements that the board has with a number of entities, and would like to remind board members to please review those drafts or those proposals, as General Counsel has shared, both the preschool promise document as well as the SORDA document as well. And decisions have to be made as we get ready to close out the year. Submit as written.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. We'll turn next to number five of six. Mrs. Weinberg and the Health and Safety Committee.
Yes, so the Health and Safety Committee met on March 20th, 2023, at 3:00 p.m. We discussed the committee work plan, in which we had various topics, but the committee will meet quarterly. The next upcoming meeting is on June 26, 2023, followed by September 18, and then a planning meeting of December 11. We talked about various topics such as lockdown drills. We also talked about bullying, in-school safety, and discipline data. So I submit the minutes as written.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Weinberg. Any questions for the Chair on the Health and Safety Committee? I don't know, did I invite any questions for Ms. Bolton as Chair of Finance? Hearing none. Last one is going to come from Dr. Moffett on our Ad Hoc Attendance Boundaries Committee. Thank you.
I'm going to try to keep up with the pace of everyone else and be brief. The, I had the Ad Hoc Attendance Boundary Committee meeting minutes. We met on March 23. I would urge everyone to go and look at our meeting. It is online, and our minutes are online. I'm just going to highlight one big thing that we are, two big things that we are actually talking about. Board Member Bolton shared regarding Silverton and the boundaries with, with concerns that have been expressed by the community. So we did talk about that and got a great historical perspective. I do urge you to go watch that. We will probably talk about that at our next meeting, which is coming up on April 27 as well. And then another thing that we explored, which is actually kind of interesting, is the possibility of middle schools in our district. We've had a lot of feedback that our junior high students need some special attention. And so we've been kind of exploring that. And what does that look like in working with administration on collecting data? So our next meeting is going to be on April 27. I believe it's at 4:00 p.m. Please join us. I submit these current minutes as written.
Thank you very much. Dr. Moffett, any questions or comments for the Ad Hoc Committee? I do have one. Dr. Moffett, I'm not sure if this topic has come up yet, or if it's something that could be a topic at a future meeting. But I had some questions come to the board from the PRM community. And the, the questions had to do with, you know, look, two things are often true from their experience. One is they have some overcrowding issues. And I know there's some construction work that's, that's in progress there. There may also be students who are coming to PRM later in their elementary school experience, third, fourth, fifth grade, and don't have a background in Montessori. And the question they were asking me, I'm not looking for an answer from this this evening. I just wanted to log it as an issue to see if you all at the next meeting could look into it. The question was about students who might be in the attendance boundary for PRM, but fairly close to a non-Montessori school. If those families are able to provide their own transportation, could there be the option of attending a school that's not PRM? And so, not expecting an answer, obviously, tonight, but I wanted to log this and see if that was in the queue as an issue to...
It has come up in discussion. I will say that. They have shared that, that concern via email. And we can talk about that at the April 27 meeting. Administration has already had that concern. We just had some awesome maps being shown to us, so we were worried about that. But that has come up, and we were, that is up for discussion.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion or comments for the Ad Hoc Committee report? Okay, could I have a motion to adopt all Sex Committee reports, please?
Don't move.
Thank you, Vice President Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Jones. We've had our discussion. All in favor of adopting all Sex Committee reports, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Reports are adopted. Okay, moving along to our next item, which is the Strategic Plan Updates. I had mentioned earlier that I want to support our board's effort to determine as a group, what are the priorities we feel are most important over a given timeline. I'm proud of the work we did in January to identify the priorities that are on the top of every agenda, one of which is our strategic plan. And so, we took a big step forward in this direction at the end of calendar year '22, when we adopted the district's goals and guardrails. Together, these reflected the participation of thousands of community members, and are the board's efforts to codify the vision of the community for student outcomes, as well as the values that our community most wants. At our January work session, we ratified a strategic planning process that was going to have two parts to it. The first was a superintendent-led process taking place this spring that would map out how the district would achieve those goals while honoring those guardrails. The second was a process with the board to update our district's vision, mission, and long-term forecast. We decided to work with the ALMA group that had been such a help and support to us during the superintendent search process. As I understand it, the first part of that process is moving along, and the second of that process has had some delays. As I understand it, and I want to invite anybody who knows more than I do, I believe it just took longer than we anticipated for a contract to get out and get signed. And then there were some additional delays while members of the ALMA team were out of the office for various holidays. I do think it's moving. At least everyone I've talked to has said that it's moving. And I do think people should expect, by people, I mean board members, should expect to hear more on the ALMA group part of that very soon. Though I do want to acknowledge that there has been a delay, and the ideal's been less than ideal. And Superintendent, I wanted to ask you, am I right that for this reason, as well as some of the pauses in the budget process, we may want to push the overall timeline back a bit that we had looked at in January? And is there anything else that you wanted to share about the strategic planning process?
I would just like to, to say yes, we would like to push the process back at this point. I think it would, we started our engagement conversations today around the initial draft that has been prepared by the about 60 people that have been working on that process. And so if we're able to push it back, I do believe that that will give us an opportunity to do even more engagement, take that feedback, do any updates that are necessary, also do the work that we do need to do collaboratively with the board around aligning to make sure that we're, we're on the same track in terms of the information that we have. And then lastly, a huge part of the overall strategic plan is the vision, mission, and forecasting. And so if we're able to do those things together, I think if we, if it's the will of the board, I think if we can come back to, you know, I would even recommend for our portion, the end of May, that last board meeting in May, I think it would give us a lot of opportunity to address what some of the concerns may be.
Thank you, Superintendent. I wanted to ask, are there any other questions from any board members? Okay, hearing none. Please expect to hear more on that soon. And we'll move to resolutions. If there are not any objections, I understand we'd like to take the first resolution and bring it back at a future board meeting so it can have a couple of modifications made to it. Any objections to returning to that first resolution at our next meeting? Hearing none, then we'll just go straight to our second resolution. Mrs. Weinberg, would you introduce number two, please?
Yes, so I am presenting a resolution approving students eligible for subsidy reimbursement in lieu of transportation for the 2022-2023 school year. And I present this resolution as written and hope for approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Any discussion on the resolution? Ms. Wagner, would you call that vote, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So we're on Superintendent of Schools, item J. Do we have any retirements to announce this evening?
Yes, we do. We have a couple. So first up, for our certificate, we have Teresa M. Beckham, remedial reading specialist at Westwood School. And then in terms of our civil service, we have two individuals, Beverly Redessel, and please excuse me if I'm mispronouncing the last name, but a licensed practical nurse from RACI Price. And then we have last, Charlotte Williams, student service technician, Department of Student Services. We would just like to thank all of them for their service, and we would like to thank them for their commitment to this district, and we wish them all of the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Do we have a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendations this evening?
Don't move.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Any discussion or questions? Ms. Wagner, would you call the vote, please?
Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. We're on now item K, Report of the Treasurer. Is there a motion to adopt the Report of the Treasurer this evening?
Don't move.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Is there a second? Thank you, Member Jones. Any discussion on the Report of the Treasurer this evening? Ms. Wagner, would you call? Ms. Wagner, would you call the vote, please?
You are looking at the revised Report of the Treasurer, right?
Yes, I apologize. I have a report here not revised. So friendly amendment, that this be the revised treasurer's report? Any objection? Great. So then this is the revised treasurer's report.
Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay, thanks, everybody. We've reached the back half of our agenda this evening. We have a handful of board matters items tonight. We're going to start with, did I skip something, Ms. Jones? You sure? Okay. I already have a couple times, so I'm sure it'll happen again. I think this first item on board matters is from Ms. Bolton on board agreements.
Yes.
We'll turn it over to you.
We've mentioned this a couple of times before. I won't belabor it too much. And I mentioned it as part of the audit and the finance report, too, that board members and administration, we have a number of agreements that impact our budget and I think maybe impact the safety in our district, as well as if we, our relationships with a number of important partners, the city and the preschool promise folks, most particularly in Metro. It would seem to me the general counsel and the administration and the board need to make some determination that over the next 30 days or so, or 40 days, 40 nights, whatever biblical things we need to emphasize, that somehow we have a resolution to these agreements and get them done and off our list. And I think helps set the course on a number of items. I'm particularly talking about the city's involvement regarding crossing guards and also preschool promise, that effort. And SORDA and Metro, the superintendent's been meeting with them and I think that's great. But there's also an annual agreement that we have been signing. And there are some issues regarding badges, certainly, and maybe dismissal times for Metro, SORDA. And also, it might be time to think in terms of, with the city, not only talking in terms of crossing guards, but also maybe further discussion about SROs. As we are in a very different place than we were even three years ago regarding safety and considerations for our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Were you looking for any response or dialogue on that, or just to bring up the issue?
I just dawned on the head. Will do fine for me that this will get done.
Sounds excellent. Item?
Vice President.
Mr. Craig, yes?
I just wanted to piggyback a little bit onto what Board Member Bolton was talking about there, the last part with regards to how the work with the city on like our crossing guards and those type of things. And I think it's also really important, given some of the safety concerns that we are hearing and some of the safety concerns we've seen most recently with how our students get to and from school, that it's important to have the city as a partner to ensuring that the schools are a safe space and that the spaces that they're, how they're getting to school becomes safer. Because, you know, again, not all of these incidents that have happened have happened right around the school. We know that kids have been in situations that have happened far away from schools or other incidents that have happened on their way to and from schools. And we also know even just riding the metro bus, which should be a safe space to do, does not always end up being that way. And so it's important to have the city as a partner in how we address that going forward to ensure that our parents and kids and teachers and staff feel safe when they get to school.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I appreciate that comment. And I think it's all part of the total picture. I think that's why indeed, when we passed some of the transportation policies, we were, even though it meant more money and more effort, it talked in terms of one mile. I think it's time to reinstitute the concept that we have safe school circles, radius. And this was mentioned by some folks, I think the superintendent said, the young people suggested about bus stops and also some of the other things to make things safe. In the old days, when you had even the extra routes, the school bus, the metro buses actually went onto campus. And that needs to happen. We have a critical issue at dismissal. Less so regarding in the morning, but when we are releasing hundreds and thousands of young people at the end of a school day, we have to have the city help us. And we have to have SORDA and Metro make a commitment to the safety of our kids and those neighborhoods. And we said that again and again and again. And I know that you've been working on that, but as we look at that agreement and as we try to figure out how to get through some of this, it's time for those folks everywhere to actually care about our teenagers.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Board Member Bolton. So we'll ask our general counsel to send the updated information that we have reviewed in terms of the agreement. This was given to, given to us earlier. And so we have done the research on that to give the follow-up. I think we've already sent the board the information that we have for preschool promise. And so we just want to discuss where we have the conversation and where we move next. In terms of the conversation with Metro specifically, because we've not had the conversation recently about what we were talking about today with SORDA. But with Metro, that is one of the things. So specifically, the, one of the asks, when I met last week, I met with both, well, this week, today I met with the students. But last week I met with the staff. So the day that we had the mental health day, I met with the staff and got some of their feedback as well. And one of those was the question around being able to make a loop at the school site. So when I did speak with Metro today, they immediately said that we would schedule the time to go out to the school. They'll walk that, the area to determine what we may be able to do. Even if putting the bus stop back in the middle of the campus may not be the thing that we can do, what can we do? Because the bus stop on the campus also means that it's open to individuals that are not on the campus to come onto the campus as well. And so that was one of the concerns that was also raised from the students. So specifically talking about Woodward, Woodward is an open campus where you start on reading and you can walk right through and get to the other side. So there are just some additional things there to discuss. So I did want to address that.
Thank you, Superintendent. I think Board Member Jones?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that, the commentary. I agree wholeheartedly with what Ms. Bolton is saying. I think also, if SORDA is going to be physically out there, let them talk to the students. I would encourage that conversation. I think it's important. I think anytime we can help empower our students to speak about these kind of issues, we need that. And I do believe, I do believe, you know, I happen to have met several people from SORDA and I do believe that they would listen, so.
And if I could just give one last comment to this, and I know we're going to let it go. But going back to the young people, we do so much support student voice. And one of the things that I did share with the team today, when, so last week, the mayor did go by the school and they had some conversation with him. They spoke with me today. And I did share with them when I met with them today that we want to have follow-up because I do think that it would be important for the individuals that spoke with me today to also do a presentation to the board. So we're going to work with them so that they're able to do that as well, just so that they're able to give their voices. Because so much of what they said, whether it's directly impacted at the school or not, it is impacting them. And so we all want to make sure that we become a part of the solution.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. Thank you, board members. We're on board matters item number two, which I believe is from Mr. Murawski.
It is. On behalf of last year's policy committee, Dr. Moffett, Ms. Bolton, and myself, and this year's policy committee, Ms. Weinberg, Ms. Bolton, and myself, this policy, Promotion and Retention, Policy 5410, was last reviewed in 2019, last revisions in 2014. And as we were looking through our academic acceleration, promotion, retention, et cetera, you will recall that we took academic acceleration out of this policy, made it its own thing, kept promotion and retention here. That happened when Dr. Moffett was part of the committee and we passed acceleration. And the intention was always that we would bring this before the full board because it is a pretty, there is a pretty significant philosophical shift in the policy as it's long stood and was first adopted years and years ago. So I'm just going to walk through very quickly because we've talked about this for months. And I know you remember every single thing I've said about it, but I'm going to say some stuff again anyway. And what we're looking for tonight is comments. If you have additions, subtractions that we can take back to policy committee, which meets in a couple weeks. I think, a couple weeks, something like that. I'm looking to Phyllis, she always knows, a couple weeks I think we meet. And we can take your suggestions back and we can add them in and then bring draft back for passage. We would like to pass this. Cincinnati Federation of Teachers, I've referenced, has helped a great deal with this. Karen Imbiss has attended our meetings, President Julie Sellers has attended our meetings. I've went to a roundtable and listened to CFOP, CFT, all different employees of the district to impact what we have here. So we are proud of it. I think I can speak for the four of us who have had a hand in this, but want to give people a chance. So I'm just going to start with what is probably the most substantive change. For years, it was sort of the policy of this district, whether known or unknown. April 21st, Phyllis Davis is a lifesaver. I was right. Couple weeks, April 21st. Thank you, Phyllis. So for years, whether known or unknown, the sort of unspoken policy of this district has been that promotion is in the best interest of the student. And at the time that this was written, that seems to have been the conventional wisdom of the time. So there's no, no one's throwing anyone under a bus with this. But that is not, at least the four members who have had their eyes on this, that is, was not in our belief. We've worked with the superintendent since she's been here. I think I can say she's aligned with where we are with this policy that, yes, we want students to promote to the next level, but if they are deficient, seriously deficient in certain areas, promotion of that student educationally could be very harming for them to continue to just promote and promote and promote without learning the material. So the most substantive change is under the paragraph that begins with the bold "promotion", and you all have seen this, I realize, and hopefully you have it tonight. But it now, it reads that "A student shall be promoted to the next grade level when it is in the best interest of the student's academic achievement, as well as the student's social and emotional development." The policy used to go on to say, "Promotion is essential to the above-described continuous pattern of achievement. Where there is no state mandated measure to determine promotion, students will be promoted to the next grade level." We excise all of that. And it just ends with, "When it's in the best interest." Another very substantive change that we, I think the committee would be remiss to not credit President Sellers and Karen Imbiss and others at the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers for bringing to us language regarding truancy from the state of Ohio. A lot of this, a lot of what we do in policy committee is, I don't want to say simply, because it's not simple and it's important, but is update our policies so that they're compliant with state regulations. There was no mention of truancy in this policy before. It's in purple in your document. I'm not going to read it to you. It's all pretty much legalese and we have to have it, but we didn't always have it. And again, I do want to thank President Sellers and some of her folks for bringing this to our attention. I think it makes the policy stronger. And then the last substantive change, there's three big ones. At the end, there's a lot of red line. And Dr. Moffett was part and parcel of, and I'll repeat this when she gets back briefly, but she was, she was very instrumental in ensuring that this last piece regarding if there was, say, a challenge to the promotion or retention piece, you know, that family voice, et cetera, was included. The current iteration of the policy committee also believes that, but also knows that, you know, that the teachers of the student are going to have probably the best idea, at least academically in the building, where the student is. So I'm going to read this if it's okay. It's all new. And shout out to Dan Hoying and Stephanie Scott and General Counsel's Office for this. "Consideration shall be given where possible to partial retention and remediation, rather than full grade level retention. To the extent possible, the superintendent will develop procedures for students to advance through an individual progression plan that aligns with the curriculum. To the extent possible, retention-promotion decisions should be made through a collaborative effort between the parents, teachers, and principal. If a dispute about a promotion-retention decision cannot be resolved through collaboration, the principal may request a district audit team composed of teachers and administrators and parents to examine the teacher's documentation and, if needed, evaluate the student's proficiency using student work. School counselors, parent-family advocates, or a school ombuds person may also be involved in the audit. Such teams shall consider the view of the parent. Consistent with Board Policy 2255 Equity and Excellence in Education and 2256 Anti-Racism, the administration should conduct a periodic review of promotion-retention decisions and consider whether such decisions are having any disproportionate effect on a subcategory of CPS students." Those are the big changes. And I would invite any of the four who have been a part of this, Ms. Bolton, Dr. Moffett, or Ms. Weinberg, if they wanted to add anything, feel free. And then love the rest of y'all's feedback, the other three. Dr. Moffett, while you're gone, I gave you shout-outs for all your part about including the parent voice and I just wanted you. Ms. Weinberg, oh sorry, I'm not.
Just to add, I think everything that you stated is accurate. I want to say as a new member on the committee, really enjoyed, you know, piecing this together and adding our input. And I want to just thank you all for this. And I would love to hear if any of my other colleagues have anything else to add.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Member Jones?
Yes, thank you. When I read this, I said to myself, wow, this is big for us. So thanks. It really is substantive. And I agree with it. And as you were reading the last paragraph around the process, I think it's very important that we provide as much support. I think it was written in there about parent advocates and social workers because parents don't often fully understand this. And I think it's very important that it is a team effort and that their voice matters just as much as the person who's making the recommendation. So I really appreciated seeing that in there.
Thank you, Member Jones. Vice President Craig?
So again, I think this is a great work that's been done. I especially appreciate the addition of the information around truancy, since it is actually such a huge part of why a lot of our students are not getting proficiency levels. So again, I want to echo Chair Murawski's appreciation given to President Sellers and CFT for that note because, and again, from talking with folks within the community, I know that that's part of one of the struggles that we see especially in the early ages, because we know truancy at that stage is not about the kid leaving school, it's about the kid not getting to school. Right? And so if it's a collaborative effort, if it's really paying attention to that, to that quality and that need for the kid to be in school, then that's going to be a really big effort to increase the number of kids who are promoted for valid reasons and because of the work they've done. So I think that's a great thing to add in.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any other feedback for the policy committee from board members? Dr. Moffett?
So I think I was very well represented. Thank you. I just want to also share that this is, this is great policy work because it took a while to get it right, but we put people at the table who are in the trenches. We heard voices of people who were in the trenches guiding us on how to make the policy have, be substantive enough and have enough teeth that they could effectively do what they needed to do for our students. And so I was very proud to sit with you, with you two and turn it over to Board Member Weinberg because policies are not, effective policies, I think, are not quick and they involve many voices. And so this was just an example of how we did that. We took the time to really get it right so that it could be effective for our kids. Because it may feel bad in the beginning if we have to, if the administration has to enact this policy against students, but it's all about the benefit of students and putting them at the, at the center and supporting our staff. So thanks so much for this.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Ms. Bolton?
Just very quickly, I think I want to say how big this is. And I do think it's frankly been led by the professional educators, be it our superintendent, be it the president of our teachers' union, be it the teachers themselves. This is all about raising the standards, the academic standards, what's best for our families and our students. So I think it's, I think it's great to have a leadership team that is willing to go to the edge. And it's great to have our teachers And it's great to have our teachers tell us, listen, we need very much to be able to prepare our kids and also have prepared kids to teach. So, I think this is big. And it's all part of a larger package. And I want to thank Mike particularly for keeping that package kind of together and taking the time, because it's all, it's huge, it really is, for CPS.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Now, Mr. Morosky, you're not looking for a vote on this this evening? This was just to gather feedback on the proposal for next time?
Yeah, we didn't want to bring this to y'all. We thought it was big enough. And clearly, you know, everyone feels that the weight of it and why this is so important for young people. And so, we, we wanted to bring it to get additional feedback from the three folks who haven't had their eyes on it as long as us, just in case you had any. And then, if everyone seems to think it's all right, then at the next meeting, we'll ask General Counsel to prepare a draft to vote on.
Thank you very much. Mr. Morosky, last call on this item from anybody?
Yeah, the last thing I want to say, save the best for last. A lot of y'all have heard me say this for six years, at least Carolyn and Ms. Bolton, Ms. Jones and Ms. Bolton. And I know a lot of people share the same belief, but I'm really excited about one specific one that gets us, inches us closer to my dream of individual education plans or IEPs for every single student in the district. When I first said that when I got here, I kind of got chuckled at. Ms. Bolton was the only one who didn't laugh at me in committee. And there's a line, "To the extent possible," the superintendent loves it too, so I'm okay, we're okay there. "The superintendent will develop procedures for students to advance through an individual progression plan that aligns with the curriculum." One step closer.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Thank you, everybody. If there's no additional discussion on that item, we're going to go to number three, which is going to come from Board Member Jones.
Yes, I am resubmitting for the third time. So, I just wanted to make that point. I intend to get this passed tonight. Okay, the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee of the whole work plan. And I took the recommendations from fellow board members and made those particular edits. They are embedded in the document. And so, I would like to make a motion that the work plan be approved as written.
Thank you, Board Member Jones. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Craig. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Weinberg?
I just have one quick question, and I just wanted some clarification on this. So, it says, as you're looking under the member responsibilities, I just wanted to make sure, so for the superintendent we have here, that she will prioritize in collaboration with the district's government liaisons, the agenda. I just wanted to make sure that that was correct, that we were going to stick with that versus... Yes.
Yes, you did ask me that.
I did.
And I did say yes. And you have to, please, operationalizing this is going to require, I mean, what, what the intention is, is that we have frequent dialogue about where those priorities are. And yes, so, so it is anticipated and expected that that area be addressed and that we can make sure we have access and information from the government liaison.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted clarification on that. So, thank you for providing.
I got you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Other discussion or questions on the work plan?
I...
Okay, great.
I have a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, too.
Who seconded?
Mr. Craig.
Oh, okay.
So, we're about to vote. Superintendent, anything you want to share on the, this version of the work plan? I know it's been through some phases. Maybe you may not, and that's fine.
I, I think I, I just want to share that I appreciate the support in working alongside Board Member, I was going to say former Vice President, Board Member Jones in trying to get this across the threshold. It does, it does represent a change in our way of work, and this has been a pretty big change. And so, I'm really excited for us to collectively move forward in really being able to dig in around this content during our very long name. I don't have an acronym for it yet, but the CAL meeting, we'll come up with an acronym for that, for the long name, but to be able to work together through that, through our Student Achievement CAL, that really has the other name.
We'll come up with a cool name or something catchy. Thank you, Superintendent. Any other discussion? Ms. Wagner, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Bolton?
I...
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Mr. Morosky? Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President, Lindy?
Yes, thank you. I think we have, congratulations, got it done, crossed the finish line. We're on our last board matters topic, which is on Cincinnati tax abatement revisions. I think this was from Dr. Moffett?
It caught me when I was about to put a little nibble in my mouth. So, we have received emails. I know I have forwarded them around our position regarding tax abatements. The city has had discussions. We have not collectively discussed this, this in length together, but I wanted to find out the status of that publicly so that people can know what our position is, if we have one, and/or when we are planning on making it.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Do Board members have thoughts or responses? Mrs. Weinberg?
And I just wanted to add, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was already passed at the last meeting for City Council. Or no, I'm not sure. I'm looking at you all for...
It's a reasonable question.
Was there something?
I know it came out of...
I thought that there was something discussed.
I know it came out of their committee. I'm actually unclear on its current disposition. Anybody have the answer to that question?
We'll come back to that then.
Other, other thoughts about the abatement proposal? Ms. Bolton?
Oh, I know that the community is very involved, and there are people that are very supportive of CPS that are leading the way regarding the new abatement issues regarding residential property. But I do think if the president can find the time for us, I think it's about time for the board to outline with the superintendent and general counsel our view about the upcoming discussions and negotiations for our agreement with the city. I think it was Mr. Morosky that pointed that out early last year, that that was coming up. And we do not have, as a board or as a district, any new position. And I think we would need to do that. So, somewhere in the very near future, General Counsel and superintendent knows when those kinds of talks will start. But there's also issues regarding ballot issues, particularly that it would be good for the district board to have a position and be able to inform the administration as to what to be negotiating very soon.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. I think that you're referencing the commercial abatement piece, is that right?
The one that we have that is needing to be renewed or ended or whatever. And the residential piece does not right now impact us. The Audit Committee talked about it as well last month, about it being a future drain on revenue for the district. So, that's where we are, and we're probably going to need to have a position on any kind of ballot issue that is going to be coming forward, too.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Other thoughts or comments on city abatements? Mr. Morosky?
Not particularly. And Ms. Bolton sort of covered the piece I, I'm most interested in, which is what the renewal of our tax agreement looks like. But she said a word that triggered me, which was "future." And as I was thinking about the Futures Commission that's meeting currently in the city, or the Mueller Commission, which is confusing, but it's the same people. And it's referred to as the Mueller Commission, because he's the CEO of P&amp;G, right? But the Futures Commission is a group of a ton of business leaders, two nonprofit leaders. I don't know, does the district have a presence on this commission? And again, if you don't know, that these folks are being tasked with figuring out what the economic future of Cincinnati looks like and recommending proposals. And one of the things that quite frankly might come out of it is that there's some kind of rise in taxes for, for housing, you know. We don't know, but does the district have a presence on this?
Ms. Wagner?
I want to say, as far as I know, and I'm looking to General Counsel, he's enormously sitting over here. I think he's on the other side. I don't think so specifically. I am, we don't at this time. So, I think it would be important for, for the board to give us, you know, direction in terms of how we're following up or what board member would be, you know, willing to engage around at least what the feedback or our, our ability to be able to attain from a board member representative for the actual committee.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it should be a board member, to be clear. I think that, I think it should, if, if there were to be a person, it might be you. But I, I do think, because it's a lot of powerful people that are part of it. It's a really exciting thing, quite frankly, I think, that we're all sitting down to talk about this. So, I think it'd be a great thing that maybe weasel our way in.
We can do some follow up.
Okay.
We'll do follow up. Lindy?
Dr. Moffett?
I just received a text message from the Vice Mayor, who shared that council passed the new three-tier residential tax abatement policy, getting smaller and shorter abatements in wealthy neighborhoods and longer, higher abatements in neighborhoods needing development. So, that's what was passed. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Craig?
You know, I think one of the things that also needs to be a part of the discussion when we talk about anything with abatements is what, something I think that Board Member Bolton was also hinting towards, which is that this affects not just, you know, direct revenue that we get, but potentially affects how, based on our funding model, we're funded by the state. And it puts certain obligations on to us in the future, if we're continuing as a district, that we may be in a position where we actually have to go back and ask for more, because the state says, y'all can get more out of these lovely rich homes that y'all have that we don't actually have. And so, I think as we think about this and as we are talking about these issues, it is important to look at the long-term effect of, based on our, how our funding model is in the state and how they continue to keep wanting to value property and not the, the actual wealth of the district. Right? The actual wealth of the folks who live in the district, students who attend the district. You know, we have a student population that's more than 75% economically disadvantaged, yet we seem to be considered a wealthy school district. So, I think that is an important part of that discussion. It ultimately will be something we have to pay attention to, because if we're, if we're asked to do more as a district from our folks who are our tax base, it's going to be harder to do that, the more and more and more folks are looking at ways to not pay taxes or ways to not have to have that obligation on them. So, it's just a reality that we're going to have to deal with.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Anything else on this topic? Ms. Bolton?
I would just also add, I have great reservations and concerns about the economic issues and also the racial and cultural issues that are part of this residential abatement issues that particularly would impact us as we return to expanding our neighborhood schools and the emphasis on, on diversity within our schools. So, this is a huge issue financially, ethically, culturally. It's a huge issue for us enrollment-wise. And I would be hoping that we could be working in some kind of concert with the city about how to, how to do this so that it is beneficial to our families currently and our future families.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Dr. Moffett?
It is time for us to have our joint CPS city meeting. I think I've spoken to many of you independently about when would you like to have that? I know the Vice Mayor did ask. We thought about April, clearly that's over now, but maybe May. So, can you all think about, it would be our turn to host. But we had a very successful joint CPS city meeting in the fall. And perhaps would you all like this to be a topic that we talk about? Or do you think that there are other things that we should be talking about in our joint meeting? Yes, ma'am.
Board Member Jones?
I'm just trying to start out my thoughts. I, I think that's a great idea to have it as part of a shared agenda. But I think there's, at least for me personally, I think there's some prep that needs to be done, because, and I just leaned over and said, and said to Board Member Bolton that I was going to make an assignment. I think what I need to help me is sort of a picture of what all these different residential, what all these different abatements are, how we're involved in them, what, what are some of the issues, the challenges, and where we see our involvement? That would help me before I go to a meeting to see. I just want to understand the landscape. And I don't feel like I have a good picture, a good grasp of the big picture around all the various tax abatement situations. I hope that makes sense.
This seems like a wonderful thing to bring up under assignments. I do want to thank Dr. Moffett for...
But I was saying that because I do, I do, I think we should get scheduled for that meeting, but I think it would be helpful to get some information.
That makes sense. I wanted to thank Dr. Moffett for putting this on the agenda. Superintendent, it looks like she has a question she wants to ask, too.
Right, so, thinking about the assignment, just to make sure that we, we have clarity moving forward, the abatements that we are, that we have to be in agreement in with the city are our commercial abatement to the question, or to the statement that Board Member Bolton made earlier. When we met with the mayor at that time, we talked about the fact that I believe our agreement, it's time for us to look at the agreement again next year. And so, really beginning to think about now what that looks like, what that impact looks like. And General Counsel Hoying, you can correct me if my, my timing is off, but that was the last conversation that we had. So, that is where we actually do have to come to agreement. Yes, thank you. The residential abatement piece, while we are impacted by it, it's not one that requires an agreement from us. And so, that's the thing that makes the difference, one of the main thing that makes the difference in the two of them. While there had been some level of conversation at some point, the one that we have to agree on before we can move forward is the commercial. It's the commercial one, and that comes up next year. The one that was just decided on, and the one that Board Member Moffett just referenced, that was approved. I think the three-tier one was approved. That's residential, and we, we don't have to move into agreement. We don't have to agree to how that's done in terms of the abatements. The commercial one is the one that we have an agreement on.
Thank you, Superintendent. Other, other last comments here? We got a couple, we got Ms. Bolton, we got Dr. Moffett, we got Ms. Bolton, and then we'll go back to Dr. Moffett.
It will come as a surprise to the superintendent that if we have to arrange an agreement for next year, that we probably need to start tomorrow.
It's actually 2025, and so, when we had the conversation, well, I, I talk in school years. So, when we talk about next year, for me, it's already beginning to move into the next school year. So, we really did talk about beginning that conversation in '24, knowing that the agreement is coming up in '25. But just to, to look at the two of them, not to say that we don't have interest around the residential one, it just did not require us to have agreement in terms of what happened with that in terms of abatement.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Dr. Moffett?
So, as a person that put this on here, I want to just clarify. I brought this up because CEJC is having very extensive conversations about abatements and the benefit or the exclusion of CPS in these conversations, and they directly impact us. And I believe they were speaking of, and Julie, you can definitely clarify, it was about all types of abatements. Residential was a huge piece of that, but there are a variety of types of abatements that the city enters into. Payroll tax abatements, I know, was impactful at the banks, and we'll have to announce that. And the city impacts that as well. So, my, my, my bringing this up was, what are we going to say as a district about, in parallel or in tandem with CEJC, because they're speaking about CPS's benefit or the lack thereof, and we don't have a voice in that conversation? So, and I also will share that the Vice Mayor said that we haven't, we, the city, has not revised the commercial five-unit building or more abatement policy yet. But Ohio law mandates that developers must pay CPS their share of the taxes, so CPS does not lose anything. So, commercials, I think, we're good on. It was just about the residential. And I brought this up because CEJC had a meeting, and a lot of people have asked me questions about it, and I don't, I don't know. And so, I wanted us to have conversations. But there's lots of data already out there about the abatements, what's going on residentially, and CEJC's been making presentations, and we just need to be informed so that we can speak relatively intelligently in the community. So, that was the whole purpose. I wanted to just clarify, it wasn't about the future contracts. It sounds like they're kind of up on where they need to be as far as commercials, but we need to be able to answer questions that are coming up in the community. we need to be able to answer questions that are coming up in the community about the position. So that's just to clarify why I brought this up.
Thank you. Superintendent and General Counsel.
Yeah, I was just going to add that the agreement that folks are talking about is the agreement that we've made with the city to allow them to approve CRA agreements for commercial and industrial projects and project TIFs. That gives them the ability to do that, and that agreement comes up December 31, 2025. So there's a little bit of time there. Residential TIFs or the residential abatements also impact our revenues very much. Just under state law, the school district doesn't have to be asked permission before their, then the payroll taxes. I'm not sure that CPS gets a part of city payroll tax, but yeah. So I don't know if that's helpful or not.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner.
We don't receive any revenue from city payroll taxes.
Thank you very much. Dr. Moffett?
I'm sorry, I was just clarifying that there were multiple types of abatements, and there was like a payroll tax or some sort of tax abatement that was given to GE at the banks. And so I didn't know if we were benefiting from that, losing from that. But CEJC did a presentation about all types of abatements. And so, again, it was really just to make certain that we are educated about what we are losing or what we would be gaining from the abatement conversation that is being held around us, but we have not come with a formalized position. So that was the whole point.
Thank you very much. Absent objection, we'll keep going to inquiries and updates. Any last comments on board matters? Superintendent?
I do have one question because we have an assignment that's on the board. And based on what Board Member Moffett said-
We'll circle back to it.
Oh, I understand. Thank you.
No problem. No problem. No, that's right, me neither. So we're on to inquiries and updates here. I have just one this evening. Are there any other inquiries or updates? Mr. Craig?
So I want to give a couple of updates from the Council on Great City Schools Conference, that was at the Legislative Policy Conference, which is where I was when we were having our lovely epic long board meeting. So a couple of things is, one that, and some of this we've already started to see with a couple of policies that have started to, or a couple of bills that have been passed out of the House to really regulate what is taught in school. This is a trend that's going around the country. And we see some of our neighbors to the south have included in that additionally to limit their use of Title I funds in order to avoid having to comply with the regulations. And so I think this, again, is something for us to pay attention to, is what's coming out of the state legislature, because Ohio seems to want to keep up, some of the Ohio legislators seem to want to keep up with, you know, our other wonderful states like Florida to the south there. So that was one update there. And then the second update, really, and again, I think this is something that we are working hard at as a board as well, but just being aware that there's a lot of folks who are really making an effort to target boards of education as a space to make a claim or make a fight. And so while we don't see it necessarily directly from our district, I think all of our neighboring districts have experienced folks attempting to use boards as like a way of arguing certain political issues or arguing certain things are taught in school that aren't, or raise different points that have not really towards improving education. And I think that's one of the things that we have done a pretty decent job at this year and that things that we need to keep focused on is the quality of education. Because I think that is the counter, in a lot of ways, to the messaging we're hearing, right? So these other districts where we're seeing their scores going down, we're seeing their lack of education happening, it's not a coincidence that when you start teaching things that are not actually based on any educational backbone, that it's a problem. And then one third one, I'm sorry, is a conversation about the rollout of the movie The Right to Read. That's been in part of production with, LeVar Burton is one of the folks who's working with it, and it's based out of, a gentleman based out of California in Oakland, who really is preaching and teaching about the fact that part of the reason our struggles are is that we have to support those who are educating kids at a young age on how to read correctly and how we can use the science of reading and other things to really help build those kids up at the very basic fundamental level of their education. So there was a big push there to make sure that we're thinking about that also in the course of building up our schools, is how do we support those folks who are really doing that fundamental level of reading because it's so crucial to everything else we do, whether it's history, whether it's math. If you can't read the problem, you can't do the work. And so that was one of the big pushes that they were talking about as well.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any other announcements or, excuse me, inquiries or updates? I'll share, this is one where I would love to get just a quick reaction from the board. And it has to do with how we get back to people who come to hearing of the public and do indicate that they want a response on their forms. We have, if people have not looked at these carefully, we do ask, I would like a written response, yes or no. For a long time, we weren't using these forms anymore because during COVID, we were virtual. But as we've come back and we've had more folks here, we do have folks who have requested a written response. I'll come in there in one second. What, I know a little bit about how we've done this in the past, but not everything. I'm glad we have some board members who have been here longer than I have. I've spoken both with the administration about this and with our board office about this. And I think there are just some questions about where that lives and also about where there could be capacity to do that and do that well. I wanted to share, I'm of the opinion that this feels important enough that I'd like us to resource it if we need, if we need to add resources somewhere, just because I think it's, it is a trust-building function with our school district, that if you come and you ask a question or share a concern, that you get a response. And so I wanted to just see what people thought about that and see if people agreed or disagreed. And we'll start with Ms. Jones.
Yes, I agree with that. And I think, I don't know, it's been such a long time. I forget some of this. But during COVID, when we were primarily virtual, of course, we asked people to put their contact number in the thing. Yes. And it's late. And then the administration would follow up with them. They put their contact information in the chat box. For the paper pieces, if they put it on there, what we did, and I believe Ms. Davis, that our office was involved in that, but it literally was giving copies to the superintendent, who then would address it, you know, delegate it or whatever. But then the response back, like the disposition was always recorded on a document that we called an assignment log. And that assignment log was maintained in the board office. So I don't know if that helps, but that's, that's the way it's been done in the past. It could probably be done a little more efficiently.
Yeah, that's helpful, and I appreciate that. And I want to be thoughtful of the hour, not keep people later, but I did, it seemed from, just reading people's head nods, that this did feel like an important thing to make sure that people who are taking the time to come speak with us and share that perspective get a response from us. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, and almost all of those were stacked, and then, as Carolyn points out, was handed to the superintendent, and she would determine. Some of them got answered by the board, but that was rare because it really isn't directed towards the board as much as something to the administration. But something occurred to me a couple of meetings ago, and I don't know if we've afforded the superintendent this opportunity, but it occurred again to me tonight, that previously, when someone would bring a particular issue to the podium of a member of the public, especially those things that are gut-wrenching and upsetting or need some sort of resolution, sometimes the president would then say to the superintendent, superintendent, would you like to refer a member of the administration to that individual? And it was, it was a nicer way to conclude, and they also felt that they had some additional information. And I noticed since much of the leadership team is here, in these last few months particularly, maybe that's something that would be a good idea.
Thank you. Any last comments here, Superintendent?
I think the only thing I would add, thank you, thank you, everyone, for the responses. So with the exception of the really large meetings that we've had recently, we have had our team that does do the follow-up with those ones that are specific and the ones that we've not been aware of. What we do find is, you know, we've not had a lot of public comment until very, very recently. And so what we found is the public comment that we have had that were specific to school issues, many of those things we were aware of already and had already been involved in. And so a part of the protocol for us moving forward, and you may have seen some of that tonight, is that whatever area it relates to, you know, people are taking their time and they're coming to public comment. If we can address it during that time, it may not be able to be addressed by me from the podium, but if it can be addressed by one of the team members or just follow-up so that they know who they should expect a follow-up from, that you see that happening. And so that was something that I think, I know that Board Member Jones actually saw, and some others may have seen it as well. And so I think that that might also help us in making sure that there is a level of responsiveness for those that come to share public comment.
That all sounds great. Thank you very, very much. Mrs. Weinberg?
Yeah, I just wanted to add something. So I do agree with everything that everyone has said. The one question that I would have, if someone does come to speak at the podium, but they have a directed question towards the board, I would just ask that that is sent to us, whether it's to the staff and then it's sent out to people, to everyone on the board, if they have a question.
Thank you very much. Any other inquiries or updates?
Let me just add to that. I'm sorry, because I don't want to have board members get lots of emails if you respond back to that, just making sure that we then get that response.
Thank you very much. Last call on inquiries and updates. Any assignments? Let's start with Ms. Jones. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I want to just repeat the assignment regarding the tax abatements. I think it is a very important topic, and I just want to be clear, what, I want to see, I would like to have the board see a portrait of the various tax abatements that the city provides, those that we are involved with, whether we're involved with them or not. The dates, like on the contract for the one that you said, 2025, just some sequence so that we understand, kind of get a better sense of what our involvement is, and that will help us determine what our future involvement is.
So thank you for the, thank you for the assignment.
And that could be, that could be in, I don't know if that's a finance committee for tax abatement or, I was going to assign it to the finance committee.
Okay. So assignments can be made in the public meeting with the majority of the board or a consensus? Is there any dissent on the assignment? Are there any questions about what the assignment is or where it's going? Great. Any other assignments? Mr. Morawski?
I just wanted to formalize it, the general counsel and his team to make the promotion-retention policy nice and pretty so we can pass it in the next meeting. Thanks again, everyone.
We had no dissent on that earlier, just to check. Any dissent now? None. Any other assignments? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I would, if possible, and maybe this has happened and I've missed it, but I would like, again, to see the numbers of students that if we use the percentage that passed the Terranova, it'd be the same percentage if we're talking in terms of Iowa. Are there more? If we use the same percentage that passed Terranova, is that going to be a larger or smaller number than the number of students passing the Iowa test? Because again, the board three years or so ago was assured that it would not necessarily diminish the number of students or the diversity if we changed tests. I would like to, that would be an assignment, and I don't know if the chair of ADHOC would agree with this, but I think I'd like to try to, if the board is okay with it, assign ADHOC to come back and have one of our phased reports back to the board as we are now in April. I think we need some sort of summary from ADHOC to be presented, just like we don't have enough stuff stirring the pot. So I do think it would be useful to have ADHOC start to report back.
I think my question, Ms. Bolton, is why ADHOC?
Because-
It's attendance boundary, right?
Why ADHOC? Because we don't, all we do is the minutes, and there are things happening in ADHOC that are impacting the community reaction, and really, board members need to know some of that dialogue that's occurring. And I think there are some things, too, that a couple of people have mentioned that could impact even as recently, as recent as next year. Not many, but some. And, yeah.
Superintendent?
So for clarification, I think I may initially have heard that the same way you did, Board President. Board Member Bolton, I think that there were two separate things in there. One was the assignment to our team for the number of students and the comparison for those students, Terranova to Iowa, and that was us. And there was a second assignment that was in there that was for an ADHOC summary report from the ADHOC committee to the board.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Ah, I just misheard. I was very confused about the enrollment test in the ADHOC committee, but that makes great sense.
I need bigger commas.
No, I just, I was, it's, maybe it's late, but I appreciate it. I got no dissent on either of those two. Any, any concerns? Any other assignments? Okay, we have already done our announcements and kudos, so having no other business before us, I declare our meeting adjourned.